Resume our.
All right.
We ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll resume our meeting and we'll move on to the new business. We have item A, Resolution 2023-02, City Phantomic 2023 Poverty Exemption.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta bring it forward.
Motion. You support?
I'm sorry. I'm getting mad at myself. We have Conrad here to speak to this board assessors office. Conrad, if you'd like to go in.
Hello. So Michigan statute requires a poverty exemption for those that can't benefit to the public welfare, public good to offer a poverty exemption application. A lot of it is similar to last year. There are some quite large changes, though, one of which is reducing the asset test. Last year, the asset test had a maximum of $26,000 in assets. This year, it's capped at $14,000. We had previously in previous years, we've had a very large asset cap for the city compared to surrounding areas. We are trying to reduce that to be more comparable to Southeastern Michigan and other communities, other cities as well. We've researched Detroit, Highland Park, Warren, Troy, and other communities. We are still above their asset level, but we've reduced it from what we had previously. So it's a $14,000 hard cap that goes to $10,000 asset limit for a family of one, $12,000 for a family of two, and then $14,000 for three and above.
And Conrad, that does not include the house in the first car, correct?
Correct. That remains the same. So the principal residence is excluded from the asset, from the list of assets, and we have kept the same thing as last year. So the first car, one car is excluded from our asset test in the city. Other cities don't do that, but in this community, we do believe having a vehicle should not be a hindrance from you. It's almost a requirement in this area. So having a car should not go against you for having to travel to work or take your kids to school or anything else. We are also ones again asking to go 115% above the federal poverty guidelines. So that's calculated in the resolution and the poverty exemption application. And we are also changing this year, our recommendation is to change it. Previously, we had 100%, a 50%, and a 25% reduction for the poverty exemption. That's according to statute. We are recommending either 100% or a 50% reduction. The state law does not prohibit us from doing that. It just prohibits us from having different percentage changes. If we did request one, we have to have approval from the state. Over the past year, from the applicants and those approved that got the 25% reduction, in our opinion, it wasn't an extremely high hope towards them to see what their reduction in taxes are. So we're bumping up the reductions, getting rid of the 25% reduction, just 50 or 100%. And from ours, we are also bumping up the percentages for those reductions. So 0 to 70% of the poverty city guidelines now gets 100% exemption, 70% to that 100% gets the 50%. Those are the other changes. Everything else is roughly the same. Do you have any questions, concerns?
So why are you doing that? Just wondering.
Michigan statute requires us to.
Great. So that's what people know. So how is it gonna affect any residents, you know?
If they...
Because you're doing eliminating the option four to two of them?
Well, it's reducing one of the reductions, but now instead of having it at 25% reduction, it's either 50% or 100%. So as long as you qualify, we're just, we're asking to eliminate the 25% reduction to either give, as long as you qualify, it's either gonna be a 50% or 100% reduction.
So they're getting more benefited?
Correct.
Just one, last one.
No.
Camera and everybody there soon. Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just real short, Conrad and I talked about this last year, like right at the beginning of the year. I don't know if people remember, we actually passed this at the beginning of last year as well, and so we talked about it then, and we talked about it again this year. And I just really support the way that they're approaching it in that they are trying to figure out how to get the most funding available to the residents who need this without putting an extra burden on the rest of the city. And so I really respect the way that they're approaching it, and so I want to just give my support and effort to what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. All right. Chief.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Choudry?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2302 passed.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-03, Employee Personal Time of Policy. I make a motion?
Second.
Next question?
Just briefly, I think that this is just a really strong motion into, you know, really valuing the employees at City Hall for the work that they do because we do know that we can't pay competitive wages to everyone else, but what we can do is start focusing in on those benefits that are provided, and I really want to appreciate Councilman Mahmoud for coming up with this idea. And this was his brainchild, and while we supported him in developing the idea, this was something that he brought forward, and I am excited to support it.
Thank you.
Mr. So I don't have laptop with me and details, so about the vacation and how many days they can bank it?
In the entirety, they can hold it for two years in a band. So whatever they have for the full year, they can hold it into the next year. So, and everybody's a little bit different on this. Some people have three weeks, some people have four weeks, some people have a couple days left, maybe a day. So I mean, it's all over the place, really.
Then when I have a problem. If I have four weeks, if I can roll over four weeks next year, there's another four weeks, eight weeks.
It doesn't keep rolling. It's just you can hold one.
I know, it's why, just within two years, I'm doing the math.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you potentially...
Eight weeks.
Yes, you could have eight weeks.
So it is too much, eight weeks. So that case, I'm gonna say, there is the law right now, use or lose. Same thing my job. So I appreciate bringing all those things for the employees, but we cannot give up to them as I would say for one week or half.
Forty hours?
Forty hours is the best thing to do it. That's why, no matter what, people have to take it, their vacation. So 40 hours, it might be fair for, to a startup, previous division had nothing. Right now, we have something, a startup. Later on, we can do a little more maybe, but I wanna start with the 40 hours.
If I may, keep in mind, Councilman, that some of our staff is in this predicament because we are understaffed.
I know, I know.
And they may have the available time, may wanna use it, but either can't or stay in because they wanna make sure things get done right, you know?
I know.
So, I mean, it is, it is their time. I mean, I could, I could tell you that this was very well accepted through City Hall when they seen it. So they do appreciate anything, of course.
Well, 40 hours. Let me give you that other scenario, I'm sorry. CFO, we just hired. Example, I'm not saying that. So you got two weeks minimum, what do you care? So if it was higher by the December, he got some two weeks and another two weeks, four weeks, just example, hypothetically.
It says one year seniority, right?
Yes.
Plus after one, no problem. That one I'm glad. It was my...
And it's one victory, yeah.
So after one year, she got four weeks. He go four weeks back home, and I'm gone. At a time. You can go like, you know? So those kinds of, that's why I tried to do the 40 hours with my colleagues. At least start with something. 40 hours bank, like a rollover. Things my idea.
Mr. Chair? Well, first of all, you know, this is to motivate and encourage our staff. I have a quick question. This is applied to non-Indian workers or...
Correct, because the unions have negotiated on behalf of their members. A lot of them have ability to get payouts, get other things. I mean, everything's a little bit different. I mean, all our union contracts vary on this.
As, as the mayor for town says, you know, I was gonna mention that if you roll over four weeks.
Not 40 hours.
According to this one, this resolution is four weeks, and next year, they will have four weeks plus they will accumulate another four weeks by working. So it'll be eight weeks accumulation.
Eight weeks would be the most, if they, if they're allowed for it.
Now, it's a head of the department who do be able to, you know, function. That I can go two months vacation, oh, that would be nice. But as my colleague said, you know, we need to be in considerations with this, with being minded, we are a small city, our staff is limited, and all those need consideration, perhaps. So we do, we make an amendment to this, do we make it 40 hours or we just...
If I may, I tend to think, Councilman, if, if the staff hasn't used the time, though, they're probably gonna get paid out on it. They're probably not gonna use it the next year.
No, but it still has to happen.
I know, I'm just, you know.
Forty hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. That's what I think.
So initially, 40 hours that was, I was like, oh, yeah, great, that's what I get. I get 40 hours rollover at work. That's what I get at my job is we get 40 hours rollover every year, and it only carries over 40 hours. So like, I never could build to 80 or 120. It's only 40 every year, so I have to use it that next year, or, because I can still only carry over 40 hours into the following year. So like, we just switched over in October. So my 2022 switched over in the 2023 fiscal years in October, so sometimes it gets confusing. But so when the fiscal year switched over, I carried over 40 hours. When summer comes around, if I don't take those extra 40 hours this year, I still only can carry 40 hours into 2024. But what I heard from our interim city manager, Max, is that we have a lot of employees who can't take that time. They don't have the capacity to take all of that time, so is it fair if we take it from them? What if we bumped it up a little bit to maybe like 60? And just give a little bit more credit to them in recognizing that we are short-staffed and there is limited ability for them to take those vacations and get, like, put an extra bit in there to make sure that they know we really do appreciate them and we want it, and we just still want it to be pragmatic.
I wanna start with the 40, honestly. I'm sorry.
Go ahead and discuss. I think the resolution is what everybody's opinions matter, it's not what I say it has to be, you know?
Mr. Chair. So we had, we are already three of them we speak, if it is not...
I think you should place a motion, just motion.
Well, no, just, I'm requesting.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mohammed Mahmud, your opinion now, you brought, since you brought the resolution, and we come up to the 40 hours, and councilwoman try to get a little more. So we have to amend it, no matter what looks like, we see the seniority situation. So what is your opinion? You can go ahead and amend it, and we can start on it.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I'll amend it to the 60 hours instead of a full vacation time to rollover on the resolution.
Mr. Chair, you wanna go the, like a 56? That's the way, two extra days, 40 to 56.
Yeah.
Map.
I could argue 56 because it's two days, but I could also 60 because it sounds like nicer. Sounds nicer.
Yeah, that's likely even number, even Steven.
They appreciate anything, you know?
Okay. Go ahead, amend it, Mr. Mohammed Mahmud.
So I'm amending it to 60, yeah, 56?
Yes.
All right.
So you're motioning to amend it then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I second it.
Wait, do you want 56 or 60?
56.
I'm gonna wanna try to get one more hour, see, oh my God.
Well, hold on, how about this? How about you ask him the question and take his answer instead of making you change his answer again?
Okay, go ahead now.
Councilman, what, what were you amending it to?
That's all.
Well, I'm amending to 60 hours.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so...
Well, she wanna take the 60 hours, so we have to give it to her.
Okay.
Oh, trust me.
Okay, go ahead.
Just one moment, let me take down my phone.
All right, so we call in the vote and amended.
Right.
Okay.
So again, suspend the law, maybe go ahead, vote, call for vote, discussion now. It was slow to...
You seconded. I have to write the amendment to change.
He's so happy to get 60 hours, that's why he's slow.
I'm happy when I'm able to take a vacation.
No problem.
All right, most can go.
Are you voting on the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Choudry?
I'm still thinking, yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the amendment to Resolution 2303 has been approved.
All right. Now we have to vote on the amendments.
Correct. Yeah, you know, motion.
Any motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are we voting?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Choudry?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2303 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-04, Authorizing to Sell City Properties by Public Silent Auction.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I jumped again.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so this is basically the long-awaited property auction. As everybody's aware, we have to have council's permission to sell off the properties. As, you know, stated in the resolution and the agenda note and all the conversations we've had, the silent auction is scheduled to begin tomorrow, and upon completion of the silent auction, we hope to be able to dispose of the properties in one swoop.
Okay. Any discussion?
Oh, wait, there is the one question from Public Comment.
Yeah, there was something.
I think it was from Lynn. Why, why do we do a public auction? Silent auction.
Silent auction.
And my response to that is it seemed to be the cleanest. I'm not an auctioneer, nor do I know any. So it seemed like the best way to do it. It seemed like the most professional, sealed, above-the-board way.
Next time you do need one, I'll do auctioneer.
We have a volunteer.
And people want to see the property they described by, that can go and see.
Yeah, I mean, we've posted everything. We don't want anyone going in them for liability purposes because some of them are in pretty bad shape, but anyone can go take a peek at them. We've cleaned the properties up extensively. We've boarded them up, locked them, make sure they're secure at this point. Actually, they're pretty good-looking now, since we, since we got all of them, we, we figured we wanted to clean them up so that the, you know, the neighbors have been living next to them in disarray for quite some time, it was overdue, and we went out and cleaned the heck out of them.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Choudry?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2304 approved.
Thank you. Next one is the Resolution 2023-05, Resolution to Accept the 2023 American Rescue Plan Grant. Make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Tiffany from Hennessy here who has been very patient with us tonight. Burn them in the oil. She's up for the next two.
So we put in for, sorry, 2023 SRF loan. We end up receiving a American Rescue Plan grant instead, so at 100% for $795,000. This will replace the water main on Prescott from Covent to Elray, and then also loop that water main down Elray into Canet and replace lead service lines. So we just need to prove up to accept that grant.
I have a question. So is this, this isn't the grant that we received when we were in 2020, American Rescue Act money?
I mean, we've received so many at this point, I have to look back.
Is this something you applied for it and we just received recently?
Yes, so the city received American, like ARPA money, so this is actually coming out of the state ARPA fund. So it's additional, additional ARPA money.
That's ARPA money. Thank you.
No question.
Hennessy's been kicking butt getting us grants.
Thank you.
Ready?
Okay.
Ready?
We can vote.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Choudry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-05 approved.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 2023-06, Approving the 2024 SRF Project Plan Preparation.
So similarly...
Hold on, hold on, thank you.
I did it twice, don't feel bad.
All right.
Go for it, Tiffany.
I'll make a motion.
We, I got...
All right, I did one.
And then you...
Okay.
Mohammed. All right. Go ahead.
So what we'd like to do is we put in notice of intent for a number of projects, nine water main projects and three clean water projects under the SRF loan. Similar to the 2023, there is grant money available, and that's one of the reasons for being so aggressive and doing so many projects under, or under the notice of intent. So to move to the next step and get us into the priority ranking list, we have to prepare a project plan. Essentially, it's a report on the city, gives a lot of background information. We also then go into detail on each project and why the alternative we, or the area we selected is the best solution and the cost. We will end up preparing that so it's available for public viewing for 15 days, and then we'll have to give a presentation to all of you guys on that information and what the, if we went 100% for the loan, what the increased user cost would be. My hope and goal here is that based on being severely underserved community and with lead service line replacement, is that we will qualify for ARPA grant money. I can't obviously guarantee that, but that's our, that's, that's my biggest hope in being so aggressive with the number of projects we're going after.
We're essentially going after everything we can, and we're getting, Hennessy's preparing us for all the potential grants to come along.
So the way the state does it is, once we turn in these project plans, they review those, and then they start ranking us. And obviously, the past 2022, I think we were numbers 33 and 34, if I remember correctly. 2023, we ranked, I think, between the 30s and 40s. So we've ranked fairly high in all of our projects, so I'm hoping we can continue that trend and get some more grant money. So this is the first step, or the next step in going after that.
Thank you. Any question? And go ahead and vote.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Choudry?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2306 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you, everyone. The next one is Resolution 2023-07, Approval for Contract Extension for Oakland County Clemis IT Services for Police Operations. I make a motion?
All set. Mr. Mayor? Chief, you are not...
Yeah, I can give a quick copy of it. So the Oakland County Clemis system is the report writing system that we use for the police department. We've been using Clemis probably since 2010, 11, somewhere around there. It's just an agreement that we enter every year with them to continue services. The money's already been budgeted, this is just a formality to extend the contract. We're very happy with their services. There's a lot of departments in Southeast Michigan that use Clemis, so we're able to get a lot of information from the system, so we're just asking that you approve the contract extension.
It's mostly the only game in town.
Yes, pretty much.
Only game in town?
Definitely the best one for us.
It's all right. Thank you.
We have no choice. It doesn't make sense for us now.
We'd have to switch.
They've been good. I, yeah, that's always good.
Councilman Choudry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2307 approved.
Thank you, and that was our last item for today from the new businesses. I will move to the reports, and I'll start with my reports. Since our last meeting on the 28th of December, we didn't have much, just have a New Year, so Happy New Year to everyone. Last, probably the major event that happened last week, January 6th was a visit from Dearborn government, the mayor and his team to our city. We had a meeting from our side, it was the city manager, Max, WG city manager, Mahali, both, just, and me.
Dearborn's mayor's assistant.
And Dearborn mayor and his chief of staff and San Baydoun, Dearborn mayor Abdul Ahmad and San Baydoun, from his team, he came as Dearborn resident, not as a Wayne County commissioner, because we have a different commissioner who represent our district. So we have a very productive meeting, and we discussed issues of common interest and shared concerns. We have some residents' questions, what are we benefiting from these discussions? Dearborn is a very similar city to our city, with similar demographics and backgrounds of residents, similar issues. Probably they are economically stable better than us, but we benefited from discussing our issues with them. And we, it was a friendly meeting with no obligations, but we committed to further communication and cooperation with them.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, we're already exchanging information back and forth.
Yes, and we already have some, we're already using some...
We're already using it.
I needed any of the audience maybe from us.
No, not that. And we are already using some of Dearborn's resources, our clerk is from there. And our WG city manager, WG city manager is also Dearborn resident. Also, the mayor mentioned that one of his new hired people is a Hamtramck resident, so...
It's two for one.
Yeah, so...
Trade-off.
So, yeah, so it was a very...
You got the better part, though, you got the better deal.
Yeah. We'll get ladies from there. So thank you so much for, that was the only event I attended for the past week, and other than meeting with the residents about the animal ordinance, of course, we had several meetings, one yesterday, one the day before, and we were very busy with this. I wanna thank all the council members for all the time they spend and the efforts they put, and I respect their decisions. I don't take it personally, we disagree, and I keep telling them that, and they know I don't try to influence any one of them. I respect their decision. They are smart people, and they know the community interest and benefits. And I wanna thank all the residents who came today, who stayed here, and the people who send their comments via email, and the people who did not, were not able to come. I hope that we put an end to this busy time that we had regarding the animal ordinance, and we start focusing on other issues of priorities for our city. That was my report and we can move to the mayor pro temp report.
I don't have nothing to.
All right, thank you. You say sometimes well. City council.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to make a very, very quick comment because, um, I promised in the very beginning that I would not comment on votes in my report time, so I'm going to refrain from doing that. Um, but I do want to make sure that everyone who came out today and commented knows that they are appreciated and they were heard. I literally wrote down every single person's name that I could hear. That's something that I take really, really seriously and that's something that we can use on nearly every topic that we discuss in the city of Hamtramck. So if there's something that you feel strongly about, even if you want to make Rana read for 30 minutes straight, please let us, like, send those comments in because that's the way that we here at this table can make the best decisions. Because a lot of times what people want to do is they call me and they say, I talked to this person and that person and this person, and that's great, but I need that person to talk to me too. But not only that, I need them to talk to the other six people that are sitting at this desk. And the best place to do that all at one time is from that podium right there. And so today, even though it wasn't necessarily in favor of what the majority wanted, we had our hands tied a little bit because the law is the law to a certain extent, but we need that input. And the best place for that input is here during those council meetings. So if you can't come, email Rana, she loves to read. She really doesn't mind. She's told me that many, many times. So please, thank you for everyone who came today and please continue that kind of involvement in the future because it really benefits all of us.
Thank you. Want to say something? Oh, Mr. Alsmoy. He was, he was next, I wanted to.
I'd like to say something for my brother Hassan, his brother, I am sorry. Yeah, they came after the nears. And I'd like to thank everyone over there and my people and my community, they came. I am happy to respect all my community, they come today. I'd like to respect 1% and I leave 99% out. Yes, I am happy, I know I'm not win this one, but I am happy to respect all my community for something what they want. And thank you for everyone.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. Well, uh, since last year's, so this is our new first meeting, happy new year to you all. And, um, there was an announcement, I forgot to do this. This is, uh, this is from the Concerned Women of Hamtramck and Hamtramck Public School District present Reverend Dr. Martin Molder King Jr., 25th Annual Prayer Breakfast. On January 16th, 2023, at the Hamtramck Community Center, which is 11350 Cherst Street, 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And it says here halal food available. So everyone, and you have to purchase a ticket, you know, adults like $20 and tables, maybe children 10 and 12 and under, older. It's, uh, 20, 10, 150 for the tables. Uh, that's one, I want to get it out. And one more thing, city manager search ended today. And as you, as you heard or as you read from the review, they said that we have received 20, 120 applications. But we have received well over 120, it's 125 now, I think. And as we speak, it's ended today. So we're looking forward to it. And I want to mention that some of the folks that during the comment, they said that we just focus on one thing. We do not. At least I don't. I speak for myself. I focus on many other things, our safety, our health issues, our community infrastructure, roads, alleyway. I constantly communicate with city manager that how we can get the things better than before, one step at a time. You know, and, uh, one more thing, or many things, I'll cut it short. The police, uh, we are recruiting, continuously recruiting police officers. Please forward anyone you know that are interested to police academy. We pay for the recruitment, right? And all those gears, we do need more police officers to, to say, to safety our communities, our city. As you heard some of them, uh, that recent incident. Some of our residents had a burglary, you know? And I was shocked to hear that, you know, during the time they were sleeping, they were asleep and somebody broke into the house. And the lady woke up and thought it was her son, but it wasn't her son. It was someone else. Ran out of the back door. Okay, on the door. Yes, so that's, uh, kind of scary. So we need to, uh, focus on our safety of our communities because that's what we are here for.
Max, will you walk with him out?
Okay, sir? Can you walk? Can you walk too? So, you know, the definitely safety come first for our families, our communities, our cities. So consider that kind of, you know, uh, that finds someone that you know interested to apply for police department. We are getting close to competitive with other cities. Uh, we're slowly progressing. I, I looked at the salary wages the other day. We're getting there. And I wanted to thank everyone else, uh, today, uh, coming out here. Actually, that showed us how, um, much, um, we care about cities. Whether we agreed upon or we disagreed, we still care about our communities, our city. That's why everybody showed up. Thank you so much and God bless you. Continue to be safe. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, nothing much, just Mr. Thank you, the community, they all showed up, they all speak, we listen. We do our best to accommodate your ideas, but you know, it's never, it's not going to bite us in the community. You all together in a celebrity or in traffic is our city. We all going to work together regardless of what the outcome is, that always, uh, disagreement and agreement, but that don't mean that we have to take it seriously. One of the things I know, uh, police chief left, but nine brought up, um, and I think you first that I got, we got your text, uh, email. They brought the, um,
Carjacks.
carjacker to the justice. So congratulations to our police department for their great work. Other hand, I think, uh, last week there's a Facebook posting that somebody house was stolen. So we need to get a little serious about the, uh, you know, police patrolling to the community and, uh, I, I know of course anything comes, it comes to blame to us. They say, uh, council and police department are worthless in the city of Hamtramck. So.
Isn't that saying?
Yes. I mean, this still is a public comment. So, you know, we need to, we need to work out to the safety and security always priority and we all are committed to do that to our community. So, um, you know, I would probably, as a city manager, I can talk to the police department, see how, how can we do our patrolling most, you know? Also, Mr. Uh, councilman say that people are driving recklessly to the city, he saw very oftenly. And I mentioned to me the other day. So we need to focus on those to make sure we don't get into the accident or any other lawsuit to the city. Thank you all.
Thank you. Move to the city manager report, if you have any.
Yes, I do. Um, I'm going to try to make it quick though. So just to, uh, speak towards Councilman Mahmoud and Councilman Chowdhury's points in regards to the crime recently. Uh, the PD is always working very, very diligently, um, even though we are still, as you know, understaffed in the PD. Um, it's been a constant struggle to get police officers, uh, these past few years. I mean, we always have trouble, but even the climate right now is just not conducive to get new officers. With that said, we have three in the background phase right now. We are still missing a multitude of our special assignments. Um, we still have grant funded positions we can't even fill, that's how shorthanded we are. But they're working lots of overtime, everyone we have, working really diligently. And we're still catching people. But as you know, we have plenty of customers. The PD will never be out of business, there will always be crime, we'll always be fighting it and always moving ahead. On a separate note, I am incredibly happy to report that all of our key department head positions are now full. Um, our controller and our DPS director are settling in nicely. Um, our controller, um, has already started to get the wrapped, the budget wrapped around. And I anticipate the next council meeting to be bringing forward the agenda for the budget, uh, to set the dates for all the budget hearings and so on and so forth and move forward on that. So very pleased that things are finally settling down in city hall and we are moving full steam ahead for you. Um, as Councilman Chowdhury said, and I just reiterated a second ago, we need police officers badly. So anyone that knows anyone that is interested, we have all kinds of incentives in place now to do that. If we get dispatchers and reserves or any other city hall employees and they work for us for a year, we'll put them through the academy. Uh, our current city employees will get $500 if they do a successful referral. Um, we're getting, uh, as they call swag, pens and things, they hand them at the academies and we're sending officers out to try and recruit. We're, we're pretty much all hands on deck to get more police officers in the city. Uh, we also need one code officer at this point and one fireman as well. So if you know anyone for those, please let us know.
Is the code, is that part of full time?
Part time, I don't know. Um, so, but also with the code, um, if you know someone that's interested in the code, that ultimately wants to be a police officer, that's a vehicle to become a police officer as well. So, um, we need the help in that area. Other than that, we are rocking and rolling and appreciate all of your help, um, day to day. I see most of you quite frequently, um, with day to day matters as well with residents. So we appreciate that too. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we are back to our favorite thing, public comment.
Public comment, thank you so much. Cheryl, do you want to still speak or are you good? Come on. Two minutes on agenda, I don't know.
No, I had a family emergency, so I had to leave.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
But I do have one question. May, can I address the attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, so you pulled up earlier regarding the animal slaughter. Can you reiterate what was the law in terms of humane slaughter?
We can provide you the language if you want to get ahold of that, I'll send it to you.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll, so my only other question is that if you, I mean, it might be a little graphic, but if you were to just cut the throat, jump on it and, and let it bleed or die, would that be considered humane?
I'd have to reread it, but. I think law actually said that was one of the methods they considered being.
But I think the way it's written in here is that it has to be suspended. So what was the suspension?
No, that's different, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
After.
I saw them.
I'm a butcher, so I know.
I wasn't sure, because they said let it leave on the ground and that's the part I was wondering.
Yeah, because, uh, the normal way of doing it and, and which I've done before, uh, you know, a couple guys, mostly men, jump on the animal, slice the throat, you hold it down, uh, people styling, that's, that's, that's one of the methods of doing it, but I don't know if that's.
I believe that, I believe it actually said.
To, to, it's basically to.
Cardioid artery.
Cardioid artery, yeah.
Parotid.
Parotid. That, that. Well, that was my one question. Thank you.
And when it says you wrapped it.
I think you took a copy of the.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Bill Meyer.
Yeah. Okay. All right, uh, yeah. Uh, I want to come back to say this because technically you can't speak to anybody else, you're supposed to speak to the chair. Like, what do you think the city manager would, you know, he could do that, but you can't.
He asked.
So anyways, uh, uh, I have to reflect on a couple of things I said earlier and, um, I have to disagree with what I said earlier. That this was good, that, uh, people came out, it's an important issue because a lot of people were concerned about it. No, I think this was a monumental waste of time. And this is where I feel now, considering what I learned today, after I spoke. I did make mention at the beginning, make sure you check all the facts, uh, talk to as many people as you can and all that. This is surprising to me that this apparently went on since July. I don't know, I haven't been following it that long, but, uh, when the sheik and Nasser came to the council and asked for this request, uh, first of all, why didn't somebody check the federal laws right away about animal slaughter? You would have known, you'd have found out right away that you can't change the federal law. It'd have been over with then, there'd been no debate, no argument in the community, follow the federal law. That would have been it. However, you thought, and we didn't do that. So that's what I'm saying, check the facts first. Secondly, you, with your good heart, wanted to try to find a compromise, which I think all you feel like, let's find a compromise with these people. They didn't have the compromise because they knew the law was the federal laws, they don't have the compromise. There's, you can't put any restrictions on it and they knew that. So they actually didn't even have to come and ask for this ordinance because it's federal law that they're allowed to do that. So they wasted our time by bringing this to the city. You wasted your time by spending all these months trying to find out if we can change and put regulations on it. And where was our attorney? I mean.
He was new, he was brand new, Bill. He was brand new.
It was the transition here and I came after they originally started, so now I was consulted and.
Oh, okay.
And we, we also heard it from our previous attorney, he, he also mentioned that we cannot restrict it.
So it should have been over. Should have been over at the beginning, uh, we have to follow federal laws and, and so this thing you voted on was a total waste of time. What you voted yes or no didn't mean anything.
Nothing.
Because there's nothing in an ordinance different than federal law. So you wasted your time voting, you wasted time talking about this issue, they wasted their time bringing it to the city. And you know, and you all know, you felt like you were wasting time. I agree with you all now, we wasted time, thank you.
Thank you. Last, but definitely not least, Lynn Blazey. Drum roll. I'll give you one.
Um, hello again, mayor and council. Regarding the animal ordinance, um, I think it's important for the community to know that while the city can't put legal restrictions, just as we do with anything else, I encourage the community to come together and create a response to address some of those concerns. Um, if people want to, you know, proactively pay for a dumpster, that is something that we don't need the city's permission to do. If we want to create a designated space, we don't have to legally require it, but we can provide that as a community for, um, residents. So there are still options to address those concerns, not involving, you know, legal, um, things that might get us into a lawsuit. And Hamtramck is great at that. We come together as a community around challenges all the time that we don't have to call, you know, Max about, or we don't have to, you know, bring to council. Um, we have neighborhood cleanups regularly to address the trash issue, we don't need permission to do that. So I just want the community to know that there are ways to support each other and making sure that, um, moving forward with families who choose to sacrifice, that we can do it safely, we can do it humanely, we can do it while respecting our neighbors, even if we're not required so by law. Um, I also was really surprised, um, around the conversation about the PTO and rollover. I get 36 days of PTO a year and I can rollover a whole year. It's unrealistic for sure for me to use that PTO. But what that does to employee morale is it lets us know that if we need to take a sick day, we can take it without fear of repercussion. Can I? Thank you. And, um, we can, you know, it, we have, the reality of living in Hamtramck is we do want to visit family overseas. Financially, it makes sense to visit your family for an extended period of time. In this, um, cultural or, you know, post-COVID climate, we can work remotely. You know, just because someone's overseas doesn't mean that they're going to completely lose touch with what's going on in their day job. Um, any responsible employee isn't going to just say, I'm going to wash my hands piece out. You know, you make arrangements to take time off. We hire responsible adults to do their jobs hypothetically. And I really think, um, that that should be considered when we're making, um, changes to the, um, employee handbook. Thank you.
That was the last one?
That's it.
All right, so we'll move to our joint.
I'll make the motion. Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everyone. 10:33. Um, I don't think that Mr. Hassan will need this, but do you want to maybe stick it in his mailbox? Sure.